An intake form and I was outside, completely forgot. I advised her over the phone just to sign my name and I will miss it so she can get that processed. So you have two here? Okay. I didn't say that.
You already signed that one.
Which one?
The top one, yeah.
We have two new ones?
Yes, good.
That is Christie Monroe. And... The other one is for Ry's.
Risa.
Huh?
Risa. Risa Smith.
That's okay.
How many you have now?
Is that R.I.S.E.?
R.I.S.E. like Ry's but, um, so that puts us back up to no fourteen because we lost three too.
In my eagerness to get these signed, I didn't do it right. We need to have a vote on these. I would take a...
Motion to amend both new residents.
So I'll have a motion and a second to, uh, amend both of these. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, now we're ready.
I mean...
Yes.
Well, can we have the name of the second person and I have Ry's or Risa?
Risa.
Is that first name or?
First name.
R.I.S.A. Smith.
And then are they full pay, partial pay, what?
One's private pay and the other one is negotiated rate.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, thirty next month, we need your monthly reports.
Yeah.
I know you've been busy, so... Thirty for me's intention.
Thank you. Before I need you to stick with them.
No, I need to.
Now we're ready for highway.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, I just got a few things here. One was, and I talked about a little bit last time, is the, the foreman, they, uh, they like for, like clock in at six instead of six thirty, but they do a lot of things that a lot of people don't realize they do. Like I said, they, I said last time, they come in, they unlock early and they, um, get the worksheet made out, figure out what we're doing for the day, all that, then they stay late and lock up. When, when they have callouts, um, they don't, when they get woke up in the middle of the night, they don't get paid for nothing. The guys going out in overtime, obviously. And they, they, so, and in the wintertime, we go out and check the roads before easily, except for last night because we didn't know it was coming. But we know, we go out early and check the roads, see if they need to be out earlier or whatever. And we, they don't get any overtime for that. So all they're, all they're wanting is either, either comp time or, or, um, just clock in a half hour early, just kind of adjust for that.
Are they exempt or non-exempt?
Um, I think they're non-exempt by that.
Are they off an hourly rate?
Yes.
You can't do what I suggested last time, switch them on and off. One guy comes in one day early. For the week and the other.
The only time that, that won't work is when we're chipping seal because it takes two on the chip box and it's usually the foreman's on there. And then in the wintertime, one of them be leaving half hour early that, you know, and, and the other guy, I mean, you just have somebody leaving early that, you know, they're still trying to get stuff done.
Always get that exempt and non-exempt. Exempt means you get paid overtime when you're...
So Ted's asking for overtime pay for the, for any reason by law. Can or cannot do that?
For hours worked, you know, if it's hours worked. I mean, uh, I mean, what is the policy? I don't know what the policy is. I, I can't answer that.
They have nothing to get paid. For coming in early or if we're going out and checking roads and this stuff during overtime hours, they have nothing to get paid.
And they get regular overtime like when, when routing stuff, but, but as far as that's the, we haven't been, haven't been getting paid for that.
Well, that's, um, that's just brought up somewhere today. We can say they're going to get it, but the council probably not budgeting for it for this paper or this year. So it might be something you might have to put in the budget next year when we make a decision on it at the end of the year. Because I'm, if they're only the fourth one, then I don't want to go and ask for additional already.
Right.
I know it's been done already, but, um, I know we understand our council's been doing a pretty good job of keeping our, keeping us in line with that and make sure people are getting raises and stuff, but I just, uh, we gotta work out a better solution on that.
Unless there's money in, in, in the budget, I'm, I'm not talking about highway department specifically, but, you know, Erwin's, Erwin be telling me they should not be allowed to work overtime. It should be worked out some other way. Because if you allow, you allow it, then you're obligated to pay it. So...
What about like a comp time type thing?
That's in the policy, yeah.
In a comp time though, you'd have to use it the same way period.
I was thinking that was flex time.
I think they're both similar.
I, I get confused on those two.
Flex time is you have to use it in a paid period. Comp time is not. But I would have to read again our policy to see if the highway does earn that or whether, or which one. I haven't, I didn't look it up. I didn't know what you were asking today, so, um... Plus the councils want to get, if you're gonna wanting to get paid and I had to, yeah, I don't know. Would have to be going through the coun- council. I don't believe you have a line for overtime performance, do you? You do? Well then... What's the deal?
I, I just, I was just, they was just wanting to clock in a little early or flex time or, or comp time or something just to get for the stuff they do after hours and they don't normally get paid for.
I just wanted to make sure he does it right.
Yes, that, exactly.
Well, if they're working half an hour more, you're give, you need to give them a comp time. But you also can adjust their times, like was suggested at the last meeting. You know, they come in and half an hour early, they leave half an hour early.
Depends on the day and what you got going on. I mean, that'd be totally up to you. If, okay, say if you're, if you're doing chip and seal and patchwork, then they might accure that overtime because I understand you come in, you got a plan night before, then you gotta change everything because someone don't show up.
Right.
It could be the main guy that runs the piece of equipment.
Right.
Then you gotta readjust everything.
Yeah.
Dude, that, and that does take time.
You're trying to find somebody else that can run that piece of equipment. But we're trying to, we're also trying to train some other people.
That was, that goes in, start doing cross training on everything.
Does overtime save foreman, foreman overtime?
I believe so, I believe he does.
Well then I think you're fine. You've got money in there.
Yeah.
I think you're fine.
Just don't overdo it or...
Right.
Or you might have to train from some later.
We're, we're not gonna access it overtime. We're just, just a few, some of the stuff, they was just wanting to look just like, like I say, like a half hour to help, you know, for everything. But just because you do something don't necessarily mean we're gonna like, well, two hours and fifteen minutes overtime. We'll put it down to two hours and fifteen minutes. You know, I mean, they just wanted a little something extra.
And if they don't do it every day, then they don't do it every day.
Right.
I can see how it might be cheaper for the county to pay somebody for a little extra time there than it is to have everybody in the garage sitting there waiting while they rest in.
Right. And that was, that was my thing when they opened, we get there to do early. Because we tried to have the sheet up by six twenty, they started six thirty. That way they're not waiting around. So, so that was, that was part of it. And then, yeah.
Okay, so what we said here now, I got lost.
I think it's already fixed because he's got a line on him.
Got a line on him for it.
If you got a line on him, then run it as you, it'll fit.
Okay. Don't over spend it though.
Oh, I won't, I won't. We won't do excessive.
Okay. And you got notice of bidders?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna be able to send those out.
Okay. Ted, you have advice for him on that, on notice of bidders?
What is it for?
For like our asphalt or chip and seal oil, patch oil, just for what the gooders just a little bit on.
Right. You got the ad ready?
Uh, I do, where did I put one in here or? Oh, yeah, right here. Pretty much, I mean, it's what we've done in the past. I just kind of changed the dates because I've never written one. So I didn't even know what I was doing. But, but I looked at two or three others and they're about the same word and everything's about the same.
A new product.
Then open, then they get sent into us, then we...
You open it.
Open it up here and you tell us what the prices are, then we go back and study it. And then come back with your recommendations.
What are you wanting to put it in the paper?
Um, yeah, I think I've written, I don't know what, that's another question I have is...
What papers we have to put it in? You have to put in paper right with the com.
The comment, just the comment? I'll make you copy that and get to you.
Why don't you just take it to the floor, comment office?
Okay.
Because they're the one that are gonna do it.
Okay.
I mean, I could help you, but you go, you're going right there.
I can drop it off, yeah?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
I understand we over it twice. Is that right?
Twice, one week apart, with the second one ten days before, I think. That's what I was looking at. You want to open this on, uh, Friday?
On Friday?
Yeah. You open it here then, too.
We all open it here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, April May, for the first meeting May.
Made the first, didn't it?
Made through, so you've got no time.
It'll be almost three weeks from today.
You'd have time to put it in on the... Fourth and nineteenth, correct? Oh, so it means you change that to the, uh, May one, okay. What time you want to set that? For nine, nine, nine thirty, nine, I mean, nine thirty?
Nine thirty?
Nine thirty. And May first?
Yeah.
When do they have time for their bids?
The...
Friday before?
Yeah. It should be the...
You want to send that to me, you know, as a letter, I'll take a look at it before, before, because, uh, you, you don't need to get it in this week's paper. I'll, I'll take a look, closer look at it, okay?
Time for...
So you want to receive those, normally get them by Friday, like before or?
End of business day.
Or Thursday better than Friday or?
Friday's fine, but usually we put a time on it, like four o'clock. What's it say?
This says, uh, uh, please note, the date the county auditor must receive sealed proposals is Friday, April twenty eighth, twenty, twenty twenty-three at eight thirty AM is where I got. I'm here. We can, we can do, I can change it to four P M.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, it's what...
That would be the, that'd be the Friday before.
Yeah, the date's fine, what time? Why don't you just change the eight to the four?
Four P M. I'll give them all day.
Four P M, got it.
Hey, you'll...
After you've changed that, you send me so I can look at it a little closer?
Okay, yes. Um, the other thing I have is, uh, globally around, um, we have, we've had a couple people here in the last month leave for actually like better pay. One guy's making like fifteen dollars more an hour. So he's going like union and, and because we had made a decision on the total warrants here.
Ted, you'd like to compare?
I, I've got, I've looked at EMA and, and highway, so, uh, the EMA's is a lot clearer and better in my opinion. Uh, I don't know if you want to, uh, you guys, I don't know if they, they've got copies of it or you've got copies of it?
I don't have a copy of it. I, they probably don't have a copy of it either.
But it's, I, where, where they got it, but I think it's a lot more easier, they're in control of it. It's easier to manage.
I think Mike prepared it and presented it to his board and they agreed to it.
So, uh, you know, I, my, my opinion was that, that the, uh, the one that the EMA has is, is probably preferable with what you've got. It, it calls for three pair of pants and one pair of boots annually. And, uh, they will, we also issued a card art jacket, uh, and, uh, emergency management coordinates, all the purchases, vendors and so forth, so, uh, that, that was, that's just my opinion, you know, so...
My only thing is a may add to that is, is the work we do, I mean, like you can go through, choose a couple pair of pants in a week. You get like oil and stuff on them that won't wash out. And you have the tar on them and then it, it'll wash out, you know? And we're, we're a pair of boots pretty quick.
How much do you get per person?
It was going to be three seventy-five.
And that's...
Per year.
And that's inside your budget?
Yes. Because we were paying, we had Centos for a long time doing pants stuff. We got one guy, they can't get him short enough. So we can't get him pants. And that's why they, that's one of the reasons why they was on a switch and just doing the allowance. So they just took that money that was for the Centos, the clothes and was going to do it for each, split it up for each person. That way they can get boots too, if they need to.
Did you talk to Centos about different clothing or tell them that you're going to think about going to a different company?
I, I, I know they have in the past. I haven't, but of course it was already done before, before, uh...
Because if we just do the three seventy-five per person, we're gonna run into what we ran into the last time. Num, itemized listing, you know, we need to pick one place where they can go buy and see and they would send that invoice into us to make it easier.
That's, um, they, there's two places that we was gonna have, let them go. And they're gonna have the names of people and how much they're allowed and a list of things that they can have. And they're gonna, they're supposed to bring a written or a signed receipt back to the highway department. We just want to have a list there and double check it, make sure they're not going over budget and all that. And then they would, we'd just pay that out of that and do a claim, send it over here. And then they would pay, Moros or Dale Hardy, it's either one. We weren't actually going to give them the money.
So who does this include? Do you have that in your policy?
Yes. It does include superintendent or secretary. All the hourly workers are eligible for it.
Now, do you prefer this for Centos?
Yes. Because they're, I mean, you didn't have boots or nothing. They're, at least they can get a pair of boots if they need it. Because you can tear a pair of boots pretty quick too. That oil's not, not good, not good on them. My, my preference is we give those for allowance.
Did you cancel Centos?
They, they already did, as far as the clothes and stuff.
I thought they had just gone down in numbers, but they did cancel it?
Every, everybody's giving their stuff back and it's just that money. We just go split up amongst everybody. So we're not going to be using any, any more money. It's only the same money, just dispersed a different way.
So Ted, does that fit in with, what he's talking about, does that fit in with the policy that you?
No, I, I, all I did was go through and compare, you know, how they were written. Uh, I mean, I didn't see anything legally wrong with, with the highway department policy. I just thought, you know, um, the, the money part of it seemed to be, you know, the emergency management that ranges for the purchases and stuff of the individuals.
Well, kind of what, what he just said is they're allowed to go to two places.
Yeah, yeah, that's in there. Yeah, that's in there.
They get already...
I've got...
They've already been contacted?
They've, they've been marked up, but I've got, um, what we've got.
Yeah, because it's tactics then to, should be.
I, I, I added some stuff.
Oh, yeah, pair boots, they were good pair boots. But when you get them out there and they're all in the tar, they go out here six percent.
I think I had given a copy before.
He does have copies at highway?
Yeah, we got one.
Okay, so moving along Scott, have you, you reviewed the existing policy? Have you reviewed yourself right through?
Yes, yes, I have.
Know what that is?
Yep.
And what changes do you want to make to this?
I, I've included it in this.
He's already...
Yeah. I've already went to and added the changes.
Okay.
Yeah. Height of the ladder is okay, yeah.
Yeah, so non, so what they don't use, don't carry over.
Right.
So they can't build up a surplus.
Right.
No shorts, no belts, suspenders.
Once, and once is the longest one is on, is the January first and next year.
Oh, we can't have camel pants?
Nope.
Okay.
Disappear out here, so we can't see you.
Even though, even some of those winter, they, they are warmer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do any of these offer a discount? Or do any of these offer a discount?
They might if we're doing that much money with it.
It doesn't hurt that.
And the word tactics, too.
Yes. Yeah. They will go hard to hold that.
Because this would have been the four year, they could have more of that.
Right.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the highway department closing allowance policy as presented.
So you're, actually your motion is to approve the whole new policy.
Right.
For this policy, I don't think.
Times it sent for one?
Yes.
To get to...
Yes.
Do you have that?
Yeah. If not, I'll call, but I think, I think we got a copy of it.
Yeah, probably be a lot bigger then.
Okay. Go on, just email it over.
Okay, it says if an employee currently uses Centos program shirts, the shirts will continue. That comes off of the three seventy-five or?
That was, no, that was, that was, um, the shop people, that was more from them. Because they're the only ones getting shirts.
So you do have Centos?
Just, just the shop shirts, that's it. Nobody else has it.
Why can't they go ahead and do the T-shirt like everybody else?
Can. I mean, that's fine.
Because did you figure that into your, you have one line, right? Highway allowances, so you took off the shirts and then divided it up?
That was, yeah, that was, that was, yeah. Because they were, they have the mechanics... They have the mechanic shirts buttoned up.
Yeah. So on that, it's not a contract that they, it's just them, the individuals themselves choose to go to Centos?
Well, that was taken off to come up with the three seventy-five person. That was, that was actually left on there for those shirts. Just be, just because the shop guys are climbing around in grease and stuff.
Right.
So they had those, but they were not supposed to get the shirts that we, we buy for them. The Carroll County Highway, they're not supposed to get those.
So, Centos?
They have, they're more variable.
Yeah. They're, the ones, the ones we, we get out of our, our budget is, for them is this T-shirt. It's the, the green and the blue ones that they wear. And then, um, the shop guys got the button ups because they're, they're more grease and oil and lay it, roll around on the floor.
So they don't get the jeans either, right?
No.
For Centos?
No.
Okay.
The only thing they get is, is those shirts.
And that no cost.
Probably needs, is that there? Is that the end?
Yeah. If an employee currently uses Centos program shirt, the shirts will continue to be available. I'm still have to keep up my motion.
Okay. You have a second? Okay. I have a motion in a second to approve the hall, uh, the highway department closing allowance policy as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Anything else?
That is it.
Okay.
I was gonna have you guys sign that so I can put...
Sign what?
The policy. So they put it in the file.
Probably should give a clean copy because that's got markings.
Okay, this, this...
Do you have, do you have one that's clean?
Yeah.
I just, okay.
And another problem.
Well, it's got, it's marked up.
Yeah.
It's got highway.
Give us a new one next week.
I'm sorry.
All right. But we, we, they can order it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you have your, um, safety classes?
I may have to write one. Because I posted it and told them we need to wear. I don't believe we actually have a, I haven't found that yet. So...
But you posted it?
Yeah, it is posted. By my, I was in the highway garage the other day and we showed it in the windows. I had a few stars and, but like the windows falling out. We need to do something, I mean, person like gets hurt or the window's open and, yeah, can't fire it up, you know? So, being to do some checking on how the... Probably have a worry for that because as far as the highway department, because, all right, I, I found out something else, I pulled up on that. There was, I did the, for the generator in the, in the electrical, we did that place. I guess Kent had already signed the first order with somebody. Maybe where the shop and the break room and the offices are different. And they all worked up to the generator, but there's a power source in the sources or whatever, I think. I'm not even sure what all, what, but, um, so the first order was signed, so we're gonna have them go in with that. So I've, I've transferred some money into him, had none of all that, so I just like...
He was also working on getting that side of the building fixed where the windows are too, so you might want to see if he's even, or signed something with somebody on that.
All right. All right.
Well, the, the conferences that we have, so he knows when he's keeping those lines and so he can get some of them canceled and he stopped one of them canceled.
Yeah, did, did you get that letter? I, we got a letter from Trumps.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. I just want to make sure you got it. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
EMA director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
A little bit behind, sir.
No, that's all right.
Uh, just wanted to give you an update on the state homeland security program grant, it opened up. Uh, closing date is towards the end of the month, but, uh, what I'm looking at going forward is to continue on building on the courthouse security stuff, so I'm gonna go after some additional courthouse security upgrades, including some key swipe. Uh, if there's enough money, upgrade the museum doors and, uh, some entry stuff, which I'll have them moving with some vendors on Wednesday afternoon after the courthouse is closed. So we can go through and take a look at some stuff. Along with that, we're gonna go get some additional portable modular vehicle barrier systems that we can use throughout the county. If all this comes through, that's all the worry, we're gonna be just shy of three hundred thousand dollars, a reimbursable grant.
Say that again?
Just shy of three hundred thousand dollars, it's all reimbursable, but that's what, right now, that's what the dollar amount are coming up to.
Three hundred?
If, if we get it all. Right on.
I'm just reminding you, I don't want you, like, two days before the meeting, and we didn't advertise or something.
You got it.
What do you do? He did that to me, that's all I could.
And the, uh, you liked that on the last one? Uh, our surrounding counties did not so well, White County had two, F two tornadoes, Howard had four tornadoes. Uh, Cass had several, Clinton had several hit around them as well.
We got another one coming this week.
We got another system coming in Tuesday night, uh, that could very well create some damage, and so.
Heard White County had some of their windmills tilted, and been.
Really?
Yeah, Ben County had, uh, a couple of their blades actually sheared the blades off, so. It's, it is pretty rough, and that, Saturday I went over and called Whiteout a little bit. We, we let out, it kinda split going around.
Would that be tough if you were near where that blade was coming down?
That's it.
Thank you.
What?
I was gonna come around the courthouse, really, the trucks, you probably didn't.
I wrote it down.
County attorney Ted Johnson.
Attorney General.
Yeah. I see the mayor is here, and I sent, sent some questions to, uh, city attorney, uh, and she's answered those questions to try to work, work toward the, uh, interloper agreement with the city. So, uh, we didn't get into the substance of what the, that agreement would look like, one, one of the options was whether we transfer jurisdiction of the road after we get it to, uh, to the city to maintain and snowplow and all that. So, uh, I, I don't think the mayor has approached your council about.
That's the line's meeting, right, Baron?
It's on the agenda for Synthos.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I haven't, I, we didn't get as, we got the agreement as far as the county's part of it, it's, it's, it's signed. It's, it's in process of going through the state rules right now. So, uh, I don't know if you wanna use this time to talk about what, what this more wants from the city, or, or if you wanting to relinquish, uh, the road after you get it, you can do that, uh, and, uh, that's legally possible.
Really wants benefited more from us than us, cause if we don't take the road over, there's no tunnel, there's no extra space, it's just gonna be a standard bridge. And City Delphi benefits more from that trail than anybody else can. And I agree with Paul, I mean, just, you know, we'd have to be out there all the time maintaining that road if we take it over. Um, my, my opinion is, is we'll take it as long as they take over the jurisdiction.
Okay, so.
Maintain it.
I mean, um, you can transfer jurisdiction of it, and then, and it doesn't go into the county road inventory, the county doesn't get the money. Now, the bridge, the, the money for the bridge is always gonna come to the county.
Right.
So, that tunnel is gonna be part of that bridge structure, so, uh, the county, uh, by statute is responsible for the bridge, so. You either, you either have to ride away or it's part of the city's inventory, so.
They don't get all the money for the road, really, because it was eighty thousand one-time payment.
They're money, they get money a year.
No, it's one-time payment of eighty thousand, if I read there, right? That was over the course of about ten years.
Well, that's.
That's including all the sections of the road from the county.
Yeah.
Right, and that's one-time payment only. I'm sure they'd like to have that eight thousand.
Okay, so that's an issue then.
And did, did I read it right, Ted?
Sure.
Did I ask that, I'm like, is that?
The road miles, which is we, we could page you.
That was one-time payment.
Mayor, we'd like to hear from you.
Yes, I think, uh, in the, uh, comments that we sent to Ted, what we proposed would be that, that eighty thousand dollars just be prorated based on the number of miles that are being transferred, um, you know, by Rockfield and roads versus the ones that are from county line to, uh, to four twenty-one, thirty-nine eighteen. So whatever those breakdowns are, uh.
Yeah, I think it was, you guys, if you guys took that section over, just, just under two miles, cause there were, what, total of six? Total, I think there were, six and a half, something like that.
Yeah, I don't know what those mileage breakdowns are, but let's assume that it's that that would just be prorated based on, how much of that would be maintained.
Seems like that's the way it should be, yeah, we do.
Okay, well, let me make a copy of this, so it's worth to look at, or I'm looking at, this is from, from Marion, her response to my questions. So you can be looking at this.
Might have to be on vacation in defense, you have to stay home, man in shift, you know?
Your wife was thinking about the homes they could purchase.
Oh.
That's your dog, we got, yeah, it's pretty harsh, it's a woman, and it's got a belt there.
Bad. I think it's pretty, it's showing up a bit.
Sure was.
They want eighty hundred dollars just to hook it by those. I would cut those five hundred.
Did you stay in the holiday unit?
Yeah, I wasn't too happy with you.
Very unhappy before, but I, I think we did a pretty good job.
Starts at number three. You got copies of this?
I think all of those, uh. We have an A through F here, points on this, understanding of the terms, if the city would like to include, they're all of the very reason, I don't see any problem with it. Does the comment have one of these?
No, the comment does not.
So.
No.
This, this is still, um, discussion, once we get, there's no, there's nothing in writing yet, this is just presented from your, for your information.
I'd like to hear.
No, what you.
On F, so the city reserves the options to annex, does that just mean the road itself or the land around it?
Well, it's.
Well, I mean, the road and the right-of-way.
Right.
Right, I mean, you're not gonna take the farmland and.
Well, that's, 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 I mean, once you have a road, once you extend your totally to which you tend, or, I mean, you have factors that go into annexation, and this improves the chances for annexation, if, if they choose to.
Because I know the states on a timeline, we have to have a decision by the next meeting.
No, no, we're okay until, what was the date?
Like, June or July.
June thirtieth.
Transfers, transfers July one, so we have to have this done by June.
July one.
Right.
And you guys meet tonight, then we can discuss the twentieth again about it? You guys will probably have to have a couple meetings, won't you, Baron?
We're having our first meeting tonight, and we'll see, we don't have a draft of anything yet, so there's, you know, we've been.
That would help if you had some information like this going back to your meeting.
Yes, right, they'll be looking at the, a similar document to that, and then hopefully, uh, you know, by, we meet once a month, the council, so, for our May meeting, we would need to have a draft, yes. And I think Mr. Johnson kindly offered to provide that draft, so.
I will do that, um, so you're okay with making a draft of an agreement, you're not committing to signing it, but drafting the agreement based upon the points that are A through F? Hey, hey, I don't think they need to vote on it, cause you're not, I doubt they're gonna hear it again, so, that's good enough. Something to get to work on.
Thank you. I just hate to see, lose an opportunity like this, but I agree with Lauren, with the one minute ten minute all vote.
Okay, um, next item on there too, of, uh, there's, uh, I don't think we ever put the, uh, the form of a, uh, an actual executive order, so.
I put that number on there, too, we used to just amend the, but I think we mustn't order this thing, is that right?
Uh, you can create a new, a new, a new and restate.
So that number should be twenty twenty-three dash oh one. Just including what you approved, um, I, that's one thing I didn't get copied off, I didn't see it.
All the exhibit?
Yeah, do you have it?
Uh, all the way on the computer.
So it would be, um, the eighty C for their second annual payment, um, sixty-seven thousand. Um, ninety thousand to the Carroll County Chamber, fifteen thousand to the senior citizens.
They didn't do the.
They didn't do Burlington, they didn't do Main Street, and they did not do the highway.
But they didn't even discuss it, they didn't turn it down, right, I was there, I was there.
Yeah, they didn't even discuss it, um, and when, except for the Burlington and the Main Street, I had put that on because, um, Julia had told me not to advertise them like we were going to for the chamber, because she said that they wanted them included. The council wanted them included in the chambers, she said that they did not meet criteria to get over a thousand dollars. You need to probably apply and get a thousand dollars, but they wanted three thousand and thirty-five hundred. So, she said, just take it back, get you, if I put it back to the council, or do what I need to do, cause you know we need grid, and so I took them back to the council. And they didn't even discuss.
The meeting was running long, they just said, I said, quit. So, what are we doing now with it? So will we go back to it, or on the agenda again for the council, or?
How much was the highway?
Two forty?
Two hundred thousand.
They didn't discuss that one at all, that was, that was at the very beginning.
They, they haven't done it in the last three years, for highway.
So, I mean, that was the first time around, so.